Compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law nineteen seventy five, Chapter two thirty one. Notice of this meeting has been properly advertised in the Daily Record and Suburban Trends. Its agenda has been posted at the appropriate locations and a copy has been filed with the Paquonic Township Clerk.
Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Blumer?
Here.
Mr. Cerisi?
Here.
Ms. Dempsey?
Here.
Mrs. Esposito?
Here.
Mr. Gitten?
Here.
Mr. McSweeney?
Here.
Mr. Pompeo?
Here.
Mr. Senick?
Here.
And Mrs. Shenton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Everyone, please stand for the flag salute.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our January twenty second regular business meeting. Uh, first, I want to acknowledge the members of our community impacted by the adverse weather a few weeks ago. First, we had some rain and recently we've had the snow. Uh, I know it hasn't been easy and the board wants to wish them all their best and that we're thinking of them. Tonight, the board will receive training on ethics and mandatory state training from our NJ SBA field rep, Charlene Peterson. This training will count towards our goal to achieve Carol Lee Larson Master Board Certification. Also tonight, we will receive a presentation on the district SSDS, which stands for Student Safety Data System. We will receive a report on that. Next tonight, under PMC item one seventy five twenty four, the board will vote to change the start and end times for the high school next year. This change was prompted by scientific studies that show students in that age group do not get enough sleep because of hormonal changes that impact their circadian rhythms, making it difficult for them to fall asleep before eleven P M. An appropriate response to this is a later school start time, which allows them to get not just more sleep, but better sleep. Benefits of this change will include better student mental health, better grades, improved test scores, and just overall happier kids. At the request of the board, Dr. Portis has led this effort over the past few years, along with members of his administration. They organized committee, uh, community committees, presented their findings, helped parent universities, and made sure that they not only kept the community informed, but also that they solicited the community's input before we thought about these changes. It was a lot of work and I want to thank them for their effort. And with that, I will pass the mic to Dr. Portis.
Thank you, Mr. Senick. First off, I'm going to pass it to, um, Zegler's for the student representative report. Then I'll provide a brief report of my own, after which we'll have the SSDS report from Mr. Reiner and Ms. Abrams. And then we will have Ms. Peterson present the school board training. But first, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So glad to see you all again. Believe it or not, we are halfway through the school year. Congratulations to the Teachers of the Year and Support Professionals of the Year at all our schools. Thank you for all you do. Class meetings with the PTHS administration review the program of studies and scheduling for the twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five school year. Mr. Hazer also talked about the potential change of school start time and the impact on the overall schedule for students. A P and elective fair was held on Thursday. Students had a chance to hear from their fellow peers and teachers about potential A P courses and electives for next year. Congratulations to all the participants of the Winter Cabaret. The students and staff did a great job. The cast and crew, The Beauty and the Beast, have begun practicing in preparation for the spring musical. Emily will say the word.
Winter Cheer had their first competition this past Sunday, January twenty first. The senior night of girls' basketball, wrestling, swim, and hockey have all taken place. It was a great night where seniors were recognized in front of their peers and their family. Congratulations to Chloe Vasquez as she was nominated to be selected to play in the All-American McDonald's Girls Basketball Game. She will wait to hear if she is selected to play. Both girls and boys' basketball teams will compete in the county tournament this coming Saturday. Come out and support. The end of the marking period is coming up and students at PTHS will be taking the midterm exams starting this Wednesday. Good luck to all students taking the exams. Thank you for your time and have a great night.
Thank you both. And do you remember the advice I gave you years and years ago for doing your best on standardized tests, the three things, or has it put you on the spot? Do your best, try your hardest, have fun. Well, hopefully you've been applying that even though clearly you just forgot it. But anyway, best of luck. Hope it all goes really well. Thanks for an outstanding report. Now that I've made it so they probably never want to come back again, um, my report will be pretty brief. As Mr. Senick alluded to, uh, we will be voting with board to be voting on school start times, um, and end times. And that focuses primarily on changes at pre-K level, PV, and most significantly at the high school. This topic was included in one of our first committee of the whole workshop meetings back in February of two thousand twenty and has appeared on no fewer than fifteen Board of Education meeting agendas, including tonight's. While also having been addressed through several committee meetings with myriad stakeholders, presentations to the community, meetings with administrators, and collaboration with staff members who have made site visits and offered input throughout the process. It has been incredibly involved and at times somewhat difficult process, but one that I can say has our commu- school community paw prints all over it. Our goal is to maximize the time we have with our students to position them to have the best educational experience as possible. I thank all involved for their patience, persistence, and willingness to address a seemingly endless array of fine details. We present it to you not as a perfect plan, but as something that represents a lot of hard work and creative thinking. To borrow from the artist Jan Van Eyck and later on Gus Stickly, I'll apply the phrase Alsit Khan to our outcomes, which translates to the best we can. Or really actually it's the best I can, but it was we. The recommended update to the pre-K is a fairly late addition to this process and reflects a carefully crafted position piece presented by our dedicated preschool teachers and operates from the premise that preschool is not the same as daycare, but is an educational experience. I realize it's not going to be popular or pull back the time, but we're doing so to allow our teachers who are trained in the tools of the My Program to work with students for the entire duration of the student's time during which they're in school. We would remove the specials program with separate teachers, but keep those structured activities in place as part of the integrated educational program with those trained teachers. And then also a quick note about something that came up too. Board will not be approving new schedules. Uh, what has to happen first in terms of the process for start times, board approves start and end times, and then school administrators, as well as me, will work together to ensure we have a schedule in place. Most likely, the schedule that is, that is on the slide deck that we presented back in October, I think it's slide thirteen. Fortunately, my Wi-Fi is not working, so I can't double check that, uh, bears closest resemblance to what we would most likely like to run at the high school. Couple other quick updates. The Veterans Wall Committee met on January eleventh to review plans for the project, determine objectives, and work on some logistical challenges. We're fortunate to have our architect, Mr. Frank Messinio, join us and he shared insight not only from his professional experience as an architect, but also from his work from having been part of the Vietnam Veterans Wall Project in Holmdel for the past thirty years. I had no idea he had been part of that. Our design plans were generated by students in our STEM Academy and will be further refined by the solutions firm. And we look forward to working with the greater community to develop something that celebrates those who have served and our deep sense of community support. And finally, last week, I met with a group from the Rotary that was organized by the Rotary that involves educators from Lincoln Park, as well as support service providers from Newbury and Atlantic Health. The goal of this project, established by our community partners in the Rotary, is to find ways to elicit greater community involvement and support for mental health programs to support our students. We are seeing significant increases in the number of students needing support, including those as young as two to three years old. I appreciate that this critical issue is getting the vital attention that it needs. That concludes my report. And with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Ms. Abrams and Mr. Reiner. I believe you have the, the power of the clicker.
All the power. Good evening. Um, I'm Una Marie Abrams. I am the, um, Anti-Bullying Coordinator and.
Hi, everybody. Uh, Matthew Reiner, Principal S J G and School Safety Specialist for the District.
Um, so tonight, uh, we're going to talk about the Student Sa- Safety Data System, which gathers two categories of data from schools in the district. The first category is reports on incidents such as violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, bullying, HIB, uh, weapons offenses, substance offenses, restraint, seclusion, any other occurrences resulting in the removal of a student from school. The second category is information related to HIB trainings and programs. So here is the breakdown of overall district numbers, keeping in mind that this is for January one, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Okay, um, so that's the breakdown of overall district numbers for that first category on incidents with more granular information on each school to follow on the next slide. So here is the school-based breakdown with the elementary schools listed first, followed by the middle school and the high school. One point of qualitative data that may help to offer some context to the higher number uh, for substance abuse, a PVMS, is that vape detectors were installed at PV in April of twenty twenty three. So this uptick may be attributable to that. Incidents leading to removal are occurrences that don't meet the criteria listed on the previous slide. However, they do result in the removal of a student from their educational placement for a duration of half a day or more. So you'll note that the numbers at the high school are significantly higher, but please also keep in mind that removals may occur for a variety of reasons and in a variety of contexts. Uh, during this timeframe, all activities aimed at promoting anti-bullying initiatives in district schools are documented and reported to SSDS. Trainings refer to purposely crafted activities that equip individuals with the necessary skills to execute a program, strategy, or a responsibility effectively. And programs are organized activities, plans, systems, or scheduled events designed to help the community to achieve a specific goal. So the next set of slides will focus on the five-year comparison on the first category of incidents. You'll notice gaps in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year due to the COVID shutdown in the spring specifically. So here's the longitudinal data, um, on violence with a downward trend between last year and this year. As it relates to vandalism, the numbers have remained the same, but the setting of those numbers has changed from last year to this year. As I mentioned before, the installation of the vape detectors at the middle school is likely the reason for the increase in numbers we're seeing at the middle school. If we go by the high school numbers, the vape detectors that were installed there may well be a deterrent, um, as well as an increased security presence in the high school hallways and bathroom entrances. So we're happy to report that there is zero longitudinal data on weapons and we are hopeful that this will always be the case. Here is the longitudinal data for confirmed HIB cases, January to June. And this is for alleged HIB cases. And as regards incidents leading to removal, there is a downward trend in the longitudinal data. So this last slide is newer for reporting and thus there's no longitudinal data to share for seclusions and restraints. The one reported case last year is, is here. And, and that is all I have.
So one of the questions that, uh, would come up would be like for the violence, having eight, uh, if you go back to the violence slide, having eight occurrences, you know, what could that consist of? Uh, those could be altercations, uh, physical altercations, uh, is mostly what those violence numbers are based upon. All right. It's not like somebody, um, targeting the school for a violent act. It's actually physical altercations.
Sure. And I think that it's a very wide, you know, kind of range for that. Um, and, and you'll notice obviously the, as, as kids mature, the consequences are higher, right? Um, so an incident for removal in the high school, um, one example of that might be that a student who's had multiple tardies and is assigned a Saturday detention doesn't show up and then that escalates, the consequences escalate, and that's a, that's reason for removal. Um, and so that's not, you know, the, so there's many connotations one might have, but I, I'm confident to say, number one, the numbers were going down. Let me just, sorry, I'm, I'm a bad clicker. Sorry. Yes, right, so. They weren't viol- yes, yes, by the, yeah.
It could be anything from, uh, not showing up to a Saturday school to, um, you know, a high level of disrespect to a staff member. Um, could be, you know, some of those could be those physical altercation, right?
Um, yeah.
But it's, um, you know, the, the, the big thing is at the high school, you know, I look at it as an elementary principle that at elementary school, you know, you're, you're teaching students how to behave, right? And the consequences are less, right? And then as they get older, the expectations raise and so do the,
Yeah.
so do the, uh, you know, the, the consequences. Overall, I think that as, as a district, you know, you're seeing good over a five-year trend, you're seeing, you know, you're seeing good data there in terms of, you know, the incidents going down. Um, the HIV alleged incidents went down, uh, therefore your HIBs that were found to be HIVs also go down. Um, I think that's through education. I think that's through a deeper understanding. Um, you know, less, uh, less false reporting. Um, I also think you're all, you're having less, um, less, I want to say, uh, like one reports and then the other one says, well, I'll get you and I'll get a report, right? So there was less of that as well, uh, rest, less retaliatory, retaliatory reporting, I think is also a part of that.
So, thank you for this so much and, and thank you for the historical data. I know I'm always like historical data. So I have another historical data question. This is only second period compared to second period.
Correct.
I think would be incredibly helpful this time next year to see second period data, but then also see the annualized data. So I, I would love a snapshot of like the entire school year. What does that look like? You know, by, by, by school and then, you know, by a, a, often offense, like that I think that would be incredibly helpful because I personally don't recall how first period looked and so I'm going to go and, and look, but I think.
We, we can actually get that for you and we can share it with Dr. Portis and he could share it out with you.
That would be amazing.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So next on the agenda, the board will receive our, uh, training from our rep, Charlene Peterson. Chris, do you want to loop her in, please?
So I, I am here. Can you see me and hear me or? Ahah, there I am. Okay. Um, just want to say good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to, you know, to work with the board tonight as it's doing its ethics training. And it was mentioned, you know, that the board is, um, working toward earning a certification for full board training. But I also wanted to acknowledge the work that the individual board members are doing in taking training. When I first looked at the board's transcripts and saw these registrations, I thought I was going to count and see how, how many trainings the board members took last year. So in twenty twenty three, on top of all the other work that you do, you know, as board members, um, the board collectively took ninety-eight different training opportunities from New Jersey school boards last year. So really just wanted, you know, uh, to kind of emphasize the amount of work and the amount of training and the priority that this board is giving to this work. Um, and then New Jersey school boards also provide certifications to individual members. So last year, the board earned seven different individual certifications. Um, with, you know, so we, you have three certified board members right now, two master board members, and one certified board leader, that's our highest level, and it looks like we're soon to be at two, right? So the board, I just wanted to acknowledge the work that the board is doing in training. Um, so having said that, I wasn't sure, am I sharing my screen or is my PowerPoint being shared or how does that work? For the ethics training?
Uh, I think we could have you share your screen. Um, it'd probably be the, I don't know what I'm looking at right now.
Okay.
It's be the most efficient and that way you maintain control over it.
Okay, so everyone see what I'm sharing right now then? Okay, good. Okay, I will go ahead then and take the board through its ethics training. You are welcome to stop at any time, ask questions at any time, you know, the board, so, um, and I can't see everyone's faces, so please, you know, either Brian, just let me know or, you know, just please feel free to jump in. Um, so just going to again take you through this training with the understanding that this is not, you know, a, a, a legal, you know, a disclaimer, it's not a legal presentation, it's more a presentation about information, recognizing that if the board had any questions about ethics, it would go, um, to their board attorney. Um, so here just wanted to emphasize the importance of, um, you know, us being elected public officials and what that means. And, you know, would hope that as we look at what's required of us as this, from the state, that we consider that to be the minimum set of standards that we would hold ourselves accountable to. Um, so from the perspective of the board, the way we are held accountable is through the School Ethics Act. Um, and this is really what separates us from thinking about ourselves differently than as volunteers, that we are elected public officials. And with that comes responsibility. So the responsibility that we have to the public, um, is that that our conduct holds the respect and the confidence of the people that elected us, but then also looks at our conduct and said that we have to avoid conduct that would be in violation of the public trust. And then we're even held to an even higher standard of saying, even if there's nothing wrong, but it could create a justifiable impression that trust is being violated, that that's what we are held accountable to. Yeah, I once had a board member say, you know, I feel like I have one hand tied behind my back. And I said, you know what? Well, maybe in a way you do. But that's really the responsibility that comes along with being an elected public official. Um, so the School Ethics Act has some other components that go along with it. Um, so we are going to go through each of those. So wanted to, um, start off talking about the fact that some of them, such as the Code of Ethics and the mandatory training, apply only to board members. Um, but then we'll see that the prohibited acts, which used to be called conflicts of interest, and the disclosure statements not only apply to board members, but also then to some administrators and you can see the, the listing of what the requirements are, which administrators, um, it applies to. So these are all the things then that are, um, components of the School Ethics Act. So the school ethics, um, is overseen by a body called the School Ethics Commission, and they're appointed by the governor for a three-year term with no more than five coming from any one political party. Um, and it's comprised of two school board members, two school administrators. And then interestingly, that the majority are five are non-school officials. Um, so what the School Ethics Commission does is they meet monthly and they would, um, you know, hold hearings either looking, um, over advisory opinions that were requested of them. And so what that means is that you as a school official, um, can ask the School Ethics Commission for their advice as to whether they think something would be a violation of the Code of Ethics or, you know, of a, of the Ethics Act, um, before it's happened. So that way you can, um, you know, get some guidance and get some direction. And then if they think that the rest of us would benefit from that, six of them can vote to make that advisory opinion public. And then they would take out any information, you know, any identifying information. Um, so like as an example that I usually provide of that, there was a board who had a high school senior elected to their board. So when you think about all the potential conflicts there could be, um, the board asked for an advisory opinion, you know, thinking, well, what happens if we're going to talk about, you know, this, some of this, the student's friends or their classmates or, um, classes they're in or teachers. And so the school, so they asked for an advisory opinion, kind of asking all of those questions. And the School Ethics Commission came back and said, you know, we essentially, we wouldn't treat the student any different than we would any other board member. Whatever would be a conflict for them would also be a conflict for this student. So just again, it's the opportunity to get some advice before the action has happened. Um, and then separately from that, they also, um, consider ethics complaints that were filed. Um, and so while only a school official can request an advisory opinion, um, essentially anyone who feels that a violation took place can file ethics charges. So it can be a board member, it can be a staff member of the public. Um, but the group it cannot be is it cannot be the Paquonic Township Board of Education. So it can't be the entire board, um, but it could be, um, individual members. Um, so, um, and so like I said, so then they, they meet monthly and just, uh, rule on those. Um, so another component of this is, um, that as board members, we are held accountable to having mandatory training. We don't always realize that we are the only public officials in the state that have this requirement. And really even around the country, there are not many states that require their board members to have mandatory training. So in New Jersey's case, um, we are required to have training in our first term of office, you know, for those first three years of our term. And one of the, the recent changes that went into effect last March, um, was that we used to have a full year to complete all of the training. But in looking at new board members, the state, you know, considered the fact of what a benefit it would be for new board members to have their training sooner than that, um, and get it earlier in their board, you know, in the start of their board year. So now the requirement is, is that new board members have to complete their Governance One, kind of the, the basics of being a board member within their first ninety days of taking office. Um, then in your second year of board service, you would take Governance Two, and there you do have a full year to complete it, and that's Finance and Labor. By the end of year three, it's Governance Three, which is Student Achievement. And then anytime you are re-elected that year following your reelection, you need to take Governance Four, which is Legal Updates. And so this needs to be taken as many times as you are re-elected. So for someone that's been on their board twenty years or however long it's been, in that year following reelection, you need to take Governance Four. So this is what, um, board members are held accountable to, uh, as the basic mandatory training, recognizing that there are many more opportunities beyond that. Um, the other thing that we are, um, held accountable to doing is identifying any, um, relatives that might work in the district and any potential financial conflict. So we have to fill out disclosure statements. So for new board members, that's within the first thirty days of taking office. And then for returning school officials, it is by April thirtieth. And those disclosure statements come directly from the state to you and then they are, um, public information. So it mentioned, you know, that the School Ethics Commission, you know, does rule on, on cases that are brought before it. Um, so these are the different penalties that the School Ethics Commission can recommend. And you say recommend because they rec- make a recommendation to the Commissioner of Education and then it is the commissioner that, um, has the final determination on the penalty. So there are four levels of penalty that penalties that can be imposed. Um, the least restrictive is a reprimand, which is just kind of, uh, almost like a verbal hand slap that said, you know, acknowledging that you did something wrong. Um, the next one is censure, and that's a little more formal and that it's publicized by a resolution. That resolution is read at the state level, it's read at your board meetings. And then also all of those places that you post your meeting notices, you also have to post that this, um, that this central resolution as well. Uh, members can also be suspended from, um, board service and it's usually in increments of like thirty days, sixty days. Um, you know, and then you can't participate at all during that time or else you can be removed from the board. So these are the, the different penalties that can be imposed by the School Ethics Commission. So I'd mentioned that the Code of Ethics is for board members only. Um, so the top is in the green box is the actual tenant or the actual code. And then underneath that is the standard. And so what that means is that if someone files. And so what that means is that if someone files ethics charges against a board member and said that they violated. Letter A, below then is the standard that the School Ethics Commission would use. To determine if a violation took place or not. So I'm just gonna kind of quickly go through what the, what the tenants are. So the first one here talks about, you know, holding us accountable to essentially being the. Kind of the, the local representatives of the state. And so it says that we will uphold and enforce all laws, rules and regulations of the state. So, you know, this, before COVID, we had a really hard time coming up with examples of what that could look like. And then once kind of mask mandates and other things came down from the state that perhaps were unpopular. Or difficult for boards to have to implement, this is what held us, what holds us accountable to doing that. And saying, you know what, if you want to make changes, if you disagree with what we're doing. Then please do so through legal and ethical procedures. So that's why you would see some boards perhaps passing resolutions. About things that they disagree with, but saying, but not giving us the right to say that we refuse to do it. And this next one talks about kind of separating the lens through which we look at things as a board member. And saying that we make decisions that are in the best interest of all children. You know, people can come to your meetings with concerns about a particular school, a particular grade, a particular situation. And when you are on this side of the board table, you have to look at through the lens of. How does this impact every single student in the school district? Because that's who I'm responsible for. So that's the lens through which I'm making decisions. This tenant looks at our role. This is the state now starting to tell us. Board members, this is your lane, this is what you do. You are policymaking, planning and appraisal. This is your work. And then also says that we have to consult those who will be affected by it. So essentially, that's why we have two readings on a policy. The first reading puts it out there, then it now gives anyone the right who has, you know, wants to come back and share with us. How that policy is impacting them. So then we can hear that then before on the second reading that we vote to adopt the policy. This next one is pretty much New Jersey School Board's mantra of saying, you know, that essentially we don't run the schools, that's the job of the superintendent. But together with our fellow board members, and again, that's important, together with our fellow board members. That we see that they're well-run. And so we, we know that we do that through the previous slide of said through policymaking, planning and appraisal. That, you know, that that's our work in making this happen. So this is an area that in a couple of minutes, we're gonna look at some of the cases. And this one about taking independent action that could compromise the board, gonna see that that. Is in surfaces in every single case where someone was found to be in violation last year. There may be other things, but every example included this one. Board members, like I say, you know, all of us are responsible for the success of the board. And making sure that we do our work at the board table and not. Going outside of that and taking private action that could compromise the board. Next one talks about surrendering our independent judgment to any kind of special groups. And so, and to me, this goes back to all students. That again, you know, regardless how you got on the board, whatever promises you think you may have made. Once you are here, the group that you are responsible to are all of the students. And this one, this is what holds us accountable to confidentiality as a board. We know that we're a public body, we do our work in public. But there are times that the state has identified that we. Can meet in executive session. And it's usually for reasons to protect the rights of our students, our staff, the legal rights of the district. But recognizing then that information that is shared with us is considered confidential and, you know. Cannot be shared with anyone outside of your fellow board members. So this is what holds us accountable to that. And then also, you know, the state recognizes, you know, that as board members, we have access to a lot of information. So it would be reasonable for the public to assume that if we say something about the schools, that it must be true. Based on the information that we have. So this is what holds us accountable to providing accurate information. And this one clarifies really our role, that the board doesn't hire, the board doesn't fire. The board just approves or disapproves the recommendation of the, the. The superintendent. So again, just kind of making that clear, what that distinction is in our role. And this one saying that we'll support and protect school personnel and the proper performance of their duties. And this is becoming more of an issue with social media. And so holding us accountable to saying, okay, board members, you, you know, don't only do that at the board table. But you now essentially are held accountable to these in everything that you do all the time. This one talks about the board not taking action or not trying to fix situations, not trying to resolve problems. Things that people, you know, when people come to you with complaints or concerns. Essentially saying that you'll refer those to the, to the superintendent. And from the board's perspective, you know, we say that essentially you're the court of last resort. That you will, you know, want to make sure that the person goes through the process first and that the board can only get involved. After failure of an administrative solution. So this is what holds us accountable to not trying to jump in any sooner than that. Because then it would be difficult to hold the superintendent accountable. And you've kind of effectively taken that quote, that court of last resort away. So these were the tenants then of the Code of Ethics themselves. And again, those apply only to board members. So these are some of the cases from last year. I'm not going to go through all of them, but when you see the. Like in, in red where it has like in parentheses, the E and the J, the E and the F, like those are the tenants that it relates to. So that's why I was saying that all of them, you'll see a letter E next to all of them about members taking independent action. So in, in some of these, it's, you know, board members that either shared communication. Someone forwarded something from a board. Shared board communication to someone outside of the board, used their board email to express their personal views. You know, sent a, invited some, one side of a group to a rally. And then the third one down, it was a little interesting in that there was a board member who the independent action that they took. Is that the district had been using MacBooks for their students. The superintendent had put a, and it was time to kind of replace them. So the superintendent had put a committee together. And the committee's recommendation was that they continue to use the MacBooks. There was a board member that questioned, why aren't we using Chromebooks? Well, you know, did we look into that? Why isn't that the recommendation? So instead of accepting the investigation that had taken place or the, the recommendation, this board member. Went off on their own and started calling other business administrators, calling other districts, calling other vendors. And kind of conducting their own research and investigation on the issue. And then here just wanted to. Talk about in the first one a little bit, they have one board member that had two things that were brought against them, but. The second one was in their, in their role as kind of a private citizen. In, they were a volunteer for a local group, they were secretary of that organization. And every year, the school's chorus performed at an event that this local group had. So this year when they reached out to the principal to ask if the chorus would be performing. The principal said no, that that would not be possible this year. So what this board member did then was texted the chorus teacher and said, I don't understand what gives, why aren't you performing this year? So it was thought then that the board member reaching out directly to the chorus teacher then. That that was essentially kind of administering the schools, gave the appearance that the board disagreed with the administration. Put, and put the chorus teacher in an uncomfortable situation and said that it was. Kind of an investigation prior to, you know, the referral to the superintendent. And, and the next one too as well was a, another situation where. A, a board member had made a walk-on resolution in a district to change the Columbus Day holiday to a different name. You know, the rest of the board in that passed, you know, a board resolution passed that. It created a firestorm in the community. And so there were two members of the public that asked to meet separately with this board member who made that walk-on resolution. To say like, why did you do this? Can you explain to us why you did this? And so then it again was considered to be taking independent action that could compromise the board and said. If the board votes on something, regardless of who was the person that brought it up, it's the board that takes the action. And said that it should then be up to the board to publicly discuss and explain the rationale for its decisions. Not an individual member doing that. And then said it also undermines the administration's authority and imposes an unnecessary strain on the administration board relationship. So that's kind of the first time we've seen the School Ethics Commission using that language to talk about. The impact of that board and superintendent relationship and how when the board does things outside of. Its scope, the impact that they, that that can have. So while we talked about the Code of Ethics of being, you know, accountable to board members only. The prohibited acts, which like I said, used to be called conflicts of interest are also, you know. Certain administrators are held accountable to that. And essentially saying that you need to recuse yourself, so not participate in discussion or vote if there's a benefit to you. As a school official or to a member of your immediate family. And we'll look at the state's definition of that in just a moment. And essentially saying that, you know, if there's any kind of a business interest. If there's any kind of a financial involvement, any kind of a favor or gain. But then if you look at letter B, Bob, it says, and you know, if you use your position to gain any unwarranted privileges, advantages. Or employment. And then importantly says that it extends to others. So that means that we can go beyond this definition of just you or your immediate family. If in any circumstance, it thinks that that has happened, that someone has received an unwarranted privilege advantage or employment. Because of your position on the board, that you can be held accountable to that. So one of the things that, you know, we have not really talked about in the past, and this is even something new or really that I just learned this year. Is that the past, if a board member had a conflict, like if, you know, there was a reason that. They had to recuse themselves, that many times in the vote, we would say, well, then they need to abstain. So what we have since learned is that it really, if you have a legal conflict, it's really different than abstaining. And saying abstaining from a matter is not sufficient to memorialize the fact that the board member had a legal conflict. Is not eligible or able to vote. So instead, they should vocalize that they are recused. So again, so that, that, that distinction is memorialized. So here is that relationship definition from the state of an immediate family member being a spouse. Or partner or dependent child residing in the same household. And then a bigger, broader definition is of a, the state's definition of a relative. Which is essentially our nepotism policy definition and pretty much has every. Relative except for cousin. I think it's the only one we determined is not on there. But again, you know, that can be. That whole term of other can be that catch-all if needed. So one of the things that the School Ethics Commission did in this past year is this is a sample of an advisory opinion. Where they took every single potential relative relationship you could think of. Like this is just an excerpt of it in the advisory opinion itself. Like this is about two or three pages long of telling you yes or no, yes or no, whether this particular relationship. Would be considered a conflict or not. So again, just some helpful guidance from the School Ethics Commission. So why that's important is that, you know, we cannot hire the relative of a board member. Or of the chief school administrator. And if the relative already works in the district. Then from the administrator's standpoint, they can exercise direct or indirect authority over their relative. And from the board's perspective, they cannot take part in employment matters concerning the superintendent. Or any supervisors in the chain of command between their relative and the superintendent. And for those boards that are undergoing a superintendent search. The board members would not be able to participate if they had a relative that works in the district. But it not only impacts hiring, it can also potentially impact negotiations, collective bargaining. So a board member that has a relative that works in the district. Is not able to participate in negotiations anyway whatsoever. If you, your spouse or dependent child, kind of that immediate family member, if you. Are a teacher, say, in another district, then you cannot participate while the board is negotiating. But once the negotiations are done, the memorandum of agreements are drawn up, the salary guides are done. Essentially, it's too late to change the outcome, then you are able to vote on the, you know, on the actual agreement itself. For those members that have that, that bigger, broader definition of a relative that works in another district somewhere. Which is almost everyone in New Jersey, right? I'm saying that you can participate in negotiations, you can vote absent any other conflict. So what that other conflict might be is identified by the state could be. If your relative had heightened union involvement. And then also wanted to point out for board members that are like in those communities where sometimes the. The bargaining units get involved in board member campaigns and may contribute money to a board election. That those board members usually have to sit out of negotiations for at least a year or more. So these are the advisory opinions that go along with the conflicts or the prohibited acts. So I'm not gonna go through all of these, or just hear more for the board members to look at later, but. Just kind of wanted to make the point that you'll see the advice in almost every case is. To recuse yourself from any and all matters related to what your conflict is. So that is kind of what the expectation is. And then if we look in the third one too, where it's said, in the potential for conflict. Actual or perceived conflict. So then again, it's what kind of a perception. So that's pretty much what we are held accountable to. So this is some, some new kind of advice that we haven't seen before. You know, we knew that if you had a relative that worked in the district, so, you know, we just looked at some of the things that you would have to recuse yourself from. But in this case, there was an advisory opinion that was asked where someone who was the board president. And their child was an instructional assistant in the district, that the advice kind of extended to, you know, typically boards. Assign their board presidents to, you know, determine who's going to serve on committees, to determine who's going to be the committee chair. And so this advisory opinion said that for a board president who had a relative working in the district. They couldn't choose the chair, the members, or serve on any committee that remotely touches or directly relates. To their family members' employment. And said, you know, not limited to personnel, negotiations and structural and finance committees, which is pretty much, you know, most of the committees, right? And then the same thing was true in the second example where it was a board member's spouse, so this wasn't the board president. But even saying that, that this board member who had a spouse that worked in the district. Again, could not be involved in any committees that touched upon their spouse's employment. So this is kind of, you know, a level of advice that again, we hadn't seen before. Also of them, there were two situations last year where board members who had a conflict. Attended executive session discussions. So in the first one, the board had a vacancy that they were filling, a vacant seat. And one of the people that applied for this vacant seat was the, a board member's husband. So when the board went into executive session to talk about, you know, who they were going to. You know, to talk about the people that had applied for the vacant seat, this board member was there, even though, you know, one of the subjects of discussion was her husband. And another situation, a board president attended multiple discussions on a fam, on a matter that involved an immediate family member. And it was just an ID that was given, so the rest of the board members didn't know who this person was. And in both cases, the board members had consulted with the attorney first. But at the end of the day, were found, you know, to, to be guilty by the School Ethics Commission and. You know, kind of made it clear that said, when a member with a conflict goes behind closed doors. It creates a justifiable impression to the public that their trust is being violated. And, you know, we say that a members who have a conflict have the same rights as the public. So this would say that you had an unwarranted privilege. So this would say that you had an unwarranted privilege or advantage because not any other member of the public is able to go into executive session with the rest of the board. And said that the member's presence could chill, meaning or intimidate or sway the comments and opinions of others. And saying as members, we're all responsible for our own actions. So, you know, one of the things that came out of this that's still pending is saying, okay, well, what if you did follow the the advice of your counsel? Does that protect me in any way? And so that's, this is kind of the defense of saying, okay, these are kind of the prerequisite things that had to have have happened that you needed to have asked the attorney before the action. You know, so you can just kind of see that those conditions. So saying that at the end of the day, you might still be found guilty, but if all of those conditions above can be met, that it may diminish the penalty or you may not receive a penalty at all. Also, again, just to take that into consideration. One of the other areas that the school ethics commission gives us guidance is on volunteering. While we think that as a board member, many of us may have got our start in the schools as volunteers. School this commission said, okay, now that you're a board member, I mean, you need to kind of maintain that thirty thousand foot view of the district. So in order to do that, it would be difficult if you were in the buildings every day, if you were enmeshed in this work, if you. So they kind of broke it down into two different areas that they would look at and said, well, what is your degree of involvement with staff and students? How often and what kind of level of interaction do you have with them? And then what's the degree of authority that you are giving and receiving directions or orders from staff and students? You know, so this kind of first started with a board member whose wife worked in the district and this board member was, and his wife always did the school plays. And so this word member would help his wife. And so when you think about all the time that's spent rehearsing and they had a budget and orders back and forth to staff. So the school ethics commission came back and said, you know, that 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 was not right, that it would be difficult to maintain that thirty thousand foot view of the district. And then kind of made the distinguishment of it would be okay, like say, if you wanted to volunteer for a rec team, say, that use the school's facilities. Cause the rec has its own bylaws, it has its own budget. You know, or any other organization that use the schools that that would be fine. But like I said, you couldn't be a volunteer, say, coach for the school's team, kind of making that distinction. Here was a sample or again, some advice from the school ethics commission about voting and said, you know, that we are entrusted to review the recommendations from the superintendent. And that's typically why most of our resolutions start with upon recommendation of of the superintendent. But I'm just wanted to share that there was an advisory opinion last year for a board member that said, and again, asking ahead of time, would I violate, would I violate the school ethics act? If I voted affirmatively to refuse to implement the this, you know, at the time when the the health and PE student learning standards were, you know, being changed. And the school ethics commission response was if it was shown that a school official acted contrary to the laws, rules and regulations promulgated by the state board of education, they could be in violation of that that letter A, you know, that that first tenet of the code of ethics that we looked at. So again, just making it clear what our responsibilities are. So one of the other areas that we've been getting more guidance in this year from the school ethics commission is on board member use of social media. And said that in general, you know, that you don't violate the act merely because you engage in social media. But instead said what they look at is could a reasonable member of the public perceive that you are speaking in your official capacity or pursuant to your official duties? So they said it depends in a large part on the content of your speech. If what you're saying has no correlation or relationship whatsoever to the board or its operations, then, you know, then it would be clear then that you weren't speaking on behalf of the board. However, if your speech in question does relate to the business of the board, it then is reasonable that it could be considered in your official capacities. And you could be subject to violation. So one of the ways that we can help make that clear, that the school ethics commission asks us to help make that clear is by using a disclaimer on our speech, right? So this or, you know, in what we're posting. And so saying that these statements are made by me as a private citizen. So this is the language then that the school ethics commission provides for us to use. But, you know, but again, the disclaimer is not a catchall. So if I use a disclaimer, does that automatically protect me from being in violation? And the answer is no, but it does help clarify the capacity in which we're, you know, which you're speaking. But then, so then, okay, then if it doesn't completely protect me, what would cause me to be in violation if I use a disclaimer? And again, it goes back to that content. And if a reasonable member of the public could perceive you're speaking in your official capacity or pursuant to your official duties, that could make the disclaimer inadequate and of no force or effect. So that really is, you know, what what matters is what is the content? And if I don't use a disclaimer, does that mean I'm automatically in violation? No, again, it goes back to the content. And then must I use the disclaimer wording exactly from the school ethics commission? And they said that the failure to parent their exact language would not mean that you didn't use an appropriate disclaimer. So here's a situation where a board member asked for an advisory opinion in their town. I guess there were several kind of separate local Facebook or local groups that were talking about things related to the school. So this board member said, well, how about we just combine them all together into one group? And it would be a Q and A between the parents and the board. And this person volunteered to be that board member that would be participating in that. So this, you know, so the school ethics commissions came back and said, it, you know, that the community is aware of your status as a board member. So it would pretty much be hard for you to disclaim your speech. But it was the last line here that I thought was pretty telling again, and said, if you only ever provide links to publicly available information, it's possible that it would not immunize you from being the subject of an ethics complaint. So again, those are all things that we need to be wary of. So a a couple of other things, you know, for most people, when you run for the board, it would not be, you know, most people have a campaign, either a campaign website, campaign Facebook page, some kind of a camp, a page that identifies you as a board member. And saying that once you get on the board, it is no longer appropriate to use any kind of a social media account that inherently indicates your position as a board member. Somebody had asked, if I just like or share something, does that, you know, it, does that automatically make me in violation? And they said, you know, again, it goes back to that whole content thing and what it is. And then in the last one, looking at using divisive language, there were a couple of situations where people had filed ethics complaints because board members use such horrible, terrible language, like offensive language. And so the school ethics commission said, like, we can't, if we were to compare to any of the tenants, we don't see anything here that we can find you guilty. But that doesn't mean, really mean that it's okay for you to talk like that. And that at the end, you're kind of your ultimate judge is the public, that your community is the one who votes you in. So they are the ones who are kind of the ultimate authority or best suited to determine, you know, who will best serve their students. So kind of points to consider in closing of this is, you know, making sure from the board's perspective that you're aware of who, you know, who or if anyone has any potential conflicts, recognizing the board attorney as the person that would provide you with guidance. And then, you know, the school ethics commission has said that not knowing about something is not, you know, not an excuse. So New Jersey school boards every Wednesday puts out school board notes that have any late, you know, any of the latest updates on any changes or additions to ethics. And then just wanted to kind of leave you with a closing thought of kind of, you know, again, just the honor of being a board member and kind of upholding ourselves to that standard. And saying, you know, that when we deliberately disregard or ignore our ethical standards, it not only threatens the integrity of the board, it compromises the district and then subverts the very purpose for which we're elected, namely to serve the needs of the school district and our students. So again, kind of the whole reason why why we do what we do, right? So I will stop sharing my screen here and I guess we'll see if any of the board members have any questions for me. Thank you very much. Anything?
No, Charlene, I think that was perfect. We appreciate you attending our meeting and presenting that very detailed information. We also appreciate you giving us the handout so we can go back and refer to some of those cases. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. Good job.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Okay, Mr. Gibbs, do you have a report?
Yes. Good evening. On tonight's board agenda, you will see a board resolution approving the removal of some items that were previously board approved and needed to be corrected. So the district can receive one point six million in SDA grant money from the two thousand fourteen and two thousand sixteen school years SDA grants. The items to be removed were never completed or completed under another grant. The application for reimbursement is subject to state approval and after the funds are received, the funds may be used towards the new SDA grant for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. The board office received confirmation of the new SDA grant in the amount of two point seven million, which was approved by the state. The grant will be part of the twenty four, two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five budget for some of the high schools' capital projects that will encompass internal ceiling heaters, rooftop exterior units and air handler units. More information will be provided at the February working board meeting. On January ninth, the high school auditorium flooded due to heavy rain, which a claim has been submitted to the school's insurance carrier for replacement of the carpet. On January seventeenth, a media center laminated beam split due to the weight of the snow and ice on the roof, of which we have put in a claim to our insurance carrier. The budget season is moving along nicely and that Dr. Portis and I have met with the principals and directors and reviewed their budgets requests for the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five school year. Finally, there will be a town meeting on January twenty fourth from seven PM to eleven thirty PM, located at the high school auditorium. The town meeting will be the seventh zone boarding adjustment meeting regarding the approval of one school global's new facility that will be located across the street from the high school. This is not a board meeting, but the use of facilities requested by the town's zoning board of adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. Members of the public may speak once for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock during this portion of the meeting. The public may speak on any agenda item only during their five minutes. If a member of the public does raise a question or questions should be directed to the board president. And please remember to state your name and sign in before you begin talking. Thank you.
I'm glad I came to this riveting meeting. Just two questions. That was great. I learned a lot. It may have been disgusting. If it was, I apologize, but will there be, if parents can't, if you vote yes for the the changing of the time, the school time, will there be someone available at the school to, I hate to say the word babysit because it's high school, but if parents work and they can't go later, is there someone on staff that maybe they could sit in auditorium and still be dropped off at the regular time if they're unable to for work or can't get a ride? Is that an option? And if it is approved, I don't know if the supporters or someone from the board, it now conflicts with the starting time of the proposed school next door. So the traffic study they did is updated now. It it takes a whole new meaning to the traffic now if the school's starting at the same time. So would would the board go on behalf of yourselves, not as in behalf of the community and express your concerns now for your students? Hey, look, our students come at this time now. It was sort of okay because it was different times, but now it's the same exact time, start time. So will someone from the board represent yourselves saying, we have a concern as a board for our students, not on behalf of the the public, but on behalf of the board itself for the students? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. That was expressed at one of the meetings. As before I got yelled at to sit down. So they definitely know about it. Anybody else?
Janelle McGowan, thirty two William Street, Paquannic. Good evening. Thank you for all your hard work that you put into the start, school start times. I'm just a little concerned with, I was on the committee. We really wanted to try our best to end school at three o'clock. Could you give us a little bit more input of how the school is going to implement the kids getting extra time and to finish a test rather than that happening during lunch right now? That was one of our concerns when I was on this committee that kids and teachers on their lunch was taken away. So I was hoping with this new schedule, there was going to be some type of kids staying to school till two forty five. If they finished their work or they didn't need to go for extra help, they could leave. Is that part of this plan? So if you can just give us a little bit more information. Also, time periods, is this going to be an hour long each class with the drop rotation schedule? I just think that I know I was at your one meeting in October or November and you did lay out a schedule. But I was just wondering if you can lay that out again for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jen Sidig. I'm actually here on behalf of my child who's home. She's studying. So she had a couple of questions she wanted me just to ask. She wanted to know why not just take five minutes off every period? Because I'm, again, like what Janelle had said, I wasn't sure what the best schedule was going to be and if this included the block schedule or. So it would be good to see what the schedule is going to be, what's proposed. She was thinking that there might be some classes where having a longer block period might be a little much. She's not a big fan of math in particulars. It might be a lot if they're going to be there for a lot longer. She understands the labs, obviously. But so, and then she was also worried about, you know, how sports would start. She didn't want to be late to, you know, to her practices after school or to games. So, and then she was also concerned about on like classes that didn't meet the day before and would the teachers then have a test on that subject that they learn now two days before and may not be such, you know, so top of mind for them. So she was concerned that, you know, I guess she knows that you can go to the extra help or if there is extra help, you could go to that. But having a class the day before a test might be better for the students that it's like fresher in their mind. So that was just some questions she had. So I told her I'd come and I'd ask them for her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, each of you for coming up to speak, including representing your child, which is a very nice thing to do. I can't comment on whether the presentation was riveting. I'll allow Mr. Basileco's comment to stand on its own merit. But as far as kids being dropped off early, it's something I gotta be honest, I haven't really thought much through it. That's something I usually address with elementary schools and it's a real topic of a focus, but I haven't thought about it necessarily for the high school. We have talked about opening up the cafeteria to make it almost like a cafe environment. And I'm looking over at Mr. Hazler, who's probably regretting the fact that he set foot in here. But it is something that if we need to help to accommodate somebody, we'll definitely look at different possi- oh, God, no. He he's apparently indicating he'd like to approach the microphone.
You selling eight dollar pink drinks in the morning or what?
It's not a bad idea. Mr. Hazler, I was, I was looking at Mr. Sannick, but permission is granted to respond.
Yeah, of course, obviously, open book.
I was just gonna help if you needed me to. So, um, to be honest with you, you know, thinking about the morning, that would be something that we could discuss. We're, I mean, administrators are here, but we're also doing things in the morning too. So that could be something that we. Um, we're, I mean, administrators are here, but we're also doing things in the morning too, so that could be something that we, you know, work through as a, if a teacher would like the duty in the morning, you know, to hang out with kids, uh, if necessary. But we're, as we develop the schedule, there's going to be things that we're going to need to work out, um, that we haven't experienced before, but that's certainly one. Um, you know, kids can't get dropped off at six forty-five in the morning, but, you know, we could certainly be willing to. We have students now that get dropped off at seven, so, you know, we have them come into the auditorium and hang out. We have security guards here and things like that, so.
Don't go too far. Yeah, and as far as the second question, in terms of representing, um, district start times at the One School Global, something that Mr. Cerisi was alluding to was that we had board members told that they weren't allowed to speak, um, which I, I, I can provide no legal advice, um, other than to say I would like it if somebody from the board is able to speak on Wednesday night or at another time to represent that interest. Um, if not, we can, we can reach out and communicate with them directly, saying this is our intention. Um, we, we do intend to start at eight oh five. We do intend to close our day at this time, um, to make it known to them, and that, that might negate some of the um, accuracy of the traffic study. Um, and then as far as, uh, the series of questions from Mrs. McGowan, um, who did participate in the committee, which is obviously greatly appreciated, and she had kind of an insider's angle on it too. Uh, I just want to clarify that the board is not approving a schedule. Um, the board approves start and end times. They don't have approval over the schedule, which isn't to say that we don't consult with them. They do have, um, input on that. But really, the schedule is going to come down to a lot of Mr. Hazler's work, my work, Mr. Foglio's work, staff's work, Dr. Sheridan's work. Um, but as far as the end time, it's, there, there are two different start times, and I think your question's kind of got to that as well, that, the conclusion of class, of classes will be at two forty-six, and then we'll have a twenty-minute, we're calling it the Panther Block period at the end of the day, during which students can get extra help, um, they can complete tests or other assessments that they need extended time with. Um, and that is time that's built into the schedule. If a student does not need that time, two forty-six, they're free to go. Um, if they, if they do want to make use of that time, and, and if I had kids in the school, I'd very much want them to, um, that time will be made available to them to three oh six. So that will be built into the schedules, and then in terms of laying out the exact time periods of schedules, that's follow-up presentation, um, that we, we want to make. We wanted to make sure we got the times approved first, um, and then we'll make a presentation to the community to follow up on what we did back in October, which in full disclosure too, what we did in October is available on the website. Um, I, from home, I can't get the YouTube to work, but I understand it works for pretty much everybody else under the sun. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that too, Rich?
Yeah, I, I explained to the students when we met in our class meetings, um, you know, if a teacher requests, you know, that's a great opportunity for our A P reviews, right? A lot of our A P reviews now happen at night, which our student athletes are involved in a zillion things, and they're rushing back for A P reviews. So the teachers can tell the students, hey, I'm doing an A P review till three oh six. So you'll know that, um, when I communicate, uh, in the summer, um, and, yeah, obviously before that, but, you know, three oh six, students would be expected to be here. Um, but if they aren't good academic standing, it's not necessary that they're here. They can go home at two forty-six. Um, you know, and it's a great opportunity for students who need extra help, extra time on tests, you know, anything like that, um, in terms of, of remediation, because as we did discuss, our teachers do, uh, a tremendous job, um, of giving up their lunchtime, which they are not obligated to do, they choose to do, um, out of the goodness of their hearts, and, and a lot of them spend a lot of time working with students during lunch, and then they don't get a lunch, you know, and they're working straight through. So this is a great opportunity for our teachers to get, you know, some, some lunchtime, some well-deserved lunchtime. Um, and also, it's a good chance for our students during lunch to just rest. Um, that's also important too, um, and then that time will be built in, you know, and that could be something where, you know, at the end of the day, kids who are involved in sports can go down and see their coach for twenty minutes and have an academic study with their coach, um, if necessary, at the end of the day, um, you know, before practice, um, you know, those are things in terms of sports, um, practices wouldn't start until three fifteen, so nobody's going to miss any time, um, because our teachers who are coaches are obligated to be here until three oh six. So those, those, um, sports would not, you know, if they need to leave for a game, you know, those are things that we'll obviously work through, and, and I've talked to a lot of high schools that have later end times, um, and they do those things. Um, you know, they, they, obviously, we're not going to penalize any coaches or kids for being late to games. Um, there is talk about moving games later because more schools are going with the later start times. It's just the reality of the situation. Um, but those are meetings, those are conversations I have at basically every county principal meeting, so. And I forgot the other, the other question that passed.
Okay, I'll keep, I'll keep going through it. Don't go too far. Um, but it's, it's important to note too, that, um, and this actually goes back to our strategic plan, that we were the first district in the state to implement, um, as one of its themes, uh, ensuring staff success. Everybody focuses on ensuring student success. That's why we're in business. But I do like the fact that we're telling our staff, look, it's great that you're willing to give up your lunchtime, and I'm sure their people are still going to do so. We need you to have a chance to unplug during the course of the workday to keep you as fresh and to keep you from not burning out as best we can. So I really like that, that, and I love the name, but the Panther Block at the end of the day, which gives the kids an opportunity, gives staff an opportunity, um, to be able to meet, um, it can be, you know, tutoring session, wha- whatever it might be, um, it can look a lot of different ways. Um, and then as far as the, the questions from the student, um, about lopping five minutes off each period, that, that's a, it's a nice idea. Um, as a, as a former teacher, I don't really like it. Um, I actually prefer to teach in longer periods. Um, I found that, um, a lot of time gets lost sometimes in that transitional time of getting a class started and getting it ended. Um, I taught in a fifty-seven minute block. I think actually for a while when I was teaching here, we had sixty-minute periods too. And I found that I, that middle block, you can get a lot more accomplished in terms of, uh, project-based learning, in terms of, um, activities with students, some small group time. So I actually prefer going to the rotating drop block because it gives you a, a, I think, a better chance to structure multiple experiences during a class period and, and stay very active. Something that's really important, that's interconnected to her second question about the sports start times too, is we, we are aware that kids are going to have to get places at set times. You know, if, if you're playing hockey, you've got to get to the ice ball at a certain time. If you're playing golf, you have to be at the course at a certain time. So, um, kids might miss part of the last period of the day with increasing frequency, and instead of that always being period nine, it's going to be period five, period six, period seven, period eight. It'll literally be on a rotating basis, so that there's not always the same class taking the hit. Um, and there's greater variety for students in there too. Um, and I, I can speak from my experience as an educator. I found that teaching in the rotating drop block was a much more effective method or, or structure than teaching, um, in a, in a more traditional, which is what we have, the more traditional nine-period day with the lunch right in the middle. Um, and then classes that didn't meet the day before, and then having a test the next day. Um, it's a good question. I, I, I don't think that's something that we would legislate and say, you know, that, that teachers can't have testing days the day after kids didn't have class. Um, I know I used to, I used to avoid tests on Monday because I found that, um, just wa- it wasn't terribly effective. But, um, it's something that I think we could have further discussion about, and I don't know, have you really talked about that?
Yeah, in our research and talking with various high schools who implement these schedules, uh, there are many schools who do. They don't, they don't, um, you know, they don't dictate it, but it's basically a, an unwritten rule that there are no tests given on the day following a dropped school pe- drop period. Um, you know, it's for the advantage of the students, obviously for the teachers as well. Um, you know, so that's something that we're going to talk about with the teachers. Um, you know, and, and again, I'll, I'm going to have further conversations with schools. I'm doing it on a regular basis. Um, you know, with schools that have moved to these types of, of schedules, um, and schedules that we're looking at, uh, from period lengthwise range from, uh, what I explained to the students is that there would be a, a fifty-minute period, a seventy-minute period, and a fifty-minute period. Um, you know, and then the same would follow in the afternoon, so the periods would be longer, but you have to keep in mind, you know, they might have a seventy-minute math period one day. Um, but they're also losing, you know, a math period a week, so they're gaining some, some instruction there. Um, you know, that, that, that will be beneficial. Um, and, and every, every, in the schools that we visited, um, when we spoke to the teachers and we explained that we had a nine-period day, and they had a rotational period, they, they said we're, we never go back to a nine-period day.
Yep.
Um, once they're, once they're in it, and the kids, you know, that I spoke to at those schools said that they enjoyed it as well, uh, because it was fewer classes in a day. They could focus on, and sometimes there's a class that they don't enjoy. Um, you know, it's the nature of it. I'm sure we all had one. Uh, there was a class that we wished we didn't have to have every day. You know, and, and it gives them a chance to, to not have that on a given day. Um, and maybe for the teacher not to have that, that class on that given day, you know, it's, it works both ways, so. Um, you know, it, it kind of gave the students and staff a little bit of flexibility that, quite frankly, we don't have in our schedule right now.
And I know you weren't suggesting that students would run out and have math less frequently.
That is correct. I'm, I'm married to a math teacher.
Your matrimonial status, I'd like that to stay intact.
No, none taken.
But I,
I did, I have a question about the testing, so it could happen that Algebra II, half those Algebra II classes are taking that test on Tuesday, but the other class won't take it until
Wednesday?
Till Wednesday.
Correct.
That's not a problem, though. Okay.
Yes, yeah, and what I was pointing out too is, like, if, you, you might have weeks where you see a math class three times. Because if that class doesn't meet on, I use the letters, that's part of my old practice, but if, if you don't have math on an A day, and it's an A week, you don't have math on Monday or Friday. You've got Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, uh, but then the next week, you, you pay the price.
If you're taking a test, I'll just throw this out, if you're taking a test first period, you know, and your buddy takes it ninth period, you know, they're not, nobody's ever going to take the ta- test at the exact same time, right? Um, so it's just the nature of, of, of the beast, um, that you deal with, so no matter what schedule, there's no perfect solution when it comes to assessment. Um, you know, even our midterm schedule, I have kids that are going to take a midterm on Tuesday or Wednesday, and somebody's going to take that same midterm on Monday. You know, so.
And this is a totally different thing, but I've been doing a lot of research about the, um, the new P S A T structure, be presenting on that Thursday night. But it uses the adaptive assessment technology where as you start answering questions based on your performance, you go down a different path that's, um, aligned to what the predictive technology believes you should be doing. Um, so i- in that case, if we do, if we do find a really strong online assessment provider, we could actually be providing kids with, with much different assessments that are geared towards um, how, how they're performing. Right now, we only have that primarily at the elementary, middle school level with something like the Ready Math Program, which does employ this. So sometimes a kid might say, I got two out of four wrong. Like, yeah, but you got the first two right, so you got two really hard questions next, but that's another story, another day.
Shameless plug on it, tomorrow night, I'm doing a parent university on scheduling, so I will be briefly, uh, talking about the schedule, um, just the framework of it to give an understanding. Um, and then we'll do a, a more formalized presentation whenever Dr. Portis tells me. I can have the mic, so we'll be good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Portis. Thank you, Mr. Hazler. Oh, one more question. Sure, go ahead.
You actually get the special microphone?
Yes.
Yes, deluxe model.
It's in three D.
How are you? I'm Kristen Shilia, Eighteenth Center Street. I just had a question. I don't know any thoughts. I know my two daughters just applied for the Allied Health Program, and just the thoughts on how that schedule might look now if it goes to the block scheduling. I just, I just kind of went through my mind. I don't know if there's any thoughts on that yet.
I'm going to push that right over to this guy, because he, he's been, he's been the most invested, and, and I will say that, uh, we wanted to make sure that whatever we put into place, it didn't, it didn't impede the existing programs that we have, such as the academies, such as work-based learning. So, um, thankfully, working with other school districts has helped us find a lot of solutions that, quite frankly, I don't think we would have come up with on our own.
This, this one's easy. There's not going to be any change, uh, to our academy structures. They're going to be able to have the same courses, uh, that they have. Uh, the rotations will continue for our, our, uh, full-time, um, academies as well as our shared time, so there's not going to be any change to our, to our academy structures.
Yeah, the good thing about having the morning, I'm sorry, right, um, the morning and the afternoon rotations too, is, um, for the shared time kids, if they're coming in the morning, they're spending the morning with us. If they're coming in the afternoon, likewise, so um, having the, the, the separate morning block and afternoon block allows that to take place much more effectively and efficiently.
Okay, so we're going to close public comment. Um, I appreciate you all coming and asking these questions. Um, I appreciate the discussion back and forth. I think it was great, so we'll move on. Uh, Mr. Gitten, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and that's actually, I'm, I'm really glad you said that as well, and I know it's genuine, and I really do appreciate, I give him a hard time about being anywhere near a microphone, but I really appreciate it. Mr. Hazler, it's a matter of public record now. I'm thanking him. Um, but really, a- as questions come up, whether it's from you, whether it's from your kids, whether it's from your neighbors, um, w- we want to be as transparent through this process as possible. So if you send questions to him, that's great. Send to Dr. Sheridan, that's great. If you send them directly to me, also great. And whatever I can't answer, you know I'm going to route it to somebody who could do a better job than I can, which I showed a great ability to do tonight, so keep the answers, keep the questions coming too, because there are definitely things that we haven't thought about, and I acknowledged it when it, um, when I was addressing Mr. Vasileco's questions. I hadn't thought about that, about kids maybe are fourteen years old, and parents aren't quite comfortable yet leaving them at home from you know, seven fifteen all the way till, till eight o'clock. Um, so, yeah, th- there, there's a lot that you, that your creative thinking can help to inform our ability to respond and implement things and keep making the, the program better, so thank you for that.
Okay, Mr. Gitten, would you please, uh, move the minutes?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion with the minutes for the twelve eleven meeting and the one four meeting.
Second. Question and discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That moves us into the approval of our action items. First up is PMC. And before I ask Mr. Cerisi to move the items under PMC, I'd like to make a motion to amend PMC one seventy-five dash twenty-four, which is the school start and dismissal times, and what I'd like to do is to take out the pre-K items at the end of that, uh, table. And the reason why I make this motion to take out the pre-K times is because I think that we had such community input from the high school and the, uh, P V start and end times that I'd like to try and solicit the same for pre-K before we actually vote on it, so we can be a little bit more informed as to where the community stands with that. Um, so I'd like to make the motion to amend PMC one seventy-five twenty-four to remove the pre-K items.
I second that motion.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Cerisi, would you please move the items under PMC with PMC one seventy-five twenty-four being, uh, as just amended?
Um, I would like to move PMC one sixty-two dash twenty-four through PMC one seventy-eight dash twenty-four.
Second.
Question and discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. McSweeney, would you please move C I S?
Yes, I'd like to move C I S fifty-four dash twenty-four through C I S sixty-two dash twenty-four.
Second.
Any question or discussion?
Yes, real quick. High impact tutoring is only at North Boulevard?
The, um, that is additional tutoring for some grade five students at North Boulevard to be paid for with the ESRP funding.
Okay.
So high-impact tutoring is at all three elementary schools.
All three for fourth and fifth grade, correct?
Third and fourth grades.
Third and fourth grade, okay, but additional at North Boulevard for fifth grade?
That is correct.
Okay, not at S J G or H O D U?
No, we were looking at the data, and, um, we determined, uh, Dr. Shalari and I were talking about this, and we did have some ESRP funding available to pay for some tutoring, um, just due to continued gaps, um, at North Boulevard.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yeah.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Blumer. Would you please move F F A?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move F F A ninety-seven dash twenty-four through F F A one oh five dash twenty-four.
Seconds. Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Uh, yes to all, uh, except for on, uh, F F A ninety-eight dash twenty-four, uh, items, uh, pertaining to me. I'd like to thank, or, because I recuse myself.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, I would like to take a moment to thank the
Uh, I would like to take a moment to thank the PTHS Association of Music Parents. For their generous donations for the uniforms and the staff stipend.
Thank you, Mr. Blumer. Okay, that brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Members of the public may speak for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock during this portion of the meeting, and the public may now speak on any topic during the five minutes. If a member of the public does raise a question, please address it to the board president and state your name before you sign in and begin.
Good evening, everyone, uh, John Nacian, Sunset Road, Palmetto Plains. I'm here representing the, uh, High School Music Parents Association. Uh, first like to congratulate, uh, Mr. Foth on his well-deserved and earned retirement, he's been. Literally, uh, uh, inspiration to many kids who came through this district. And launched them into great careers here as musicians in our high school. Um, hopefully that tradition continues with Mr. Strifer's new mentee. Um, I'd also like to, uh, thank members of the public, including Mr. Senek himself, for coming out to our pancake breakfast this past weekend. Hopefully, uh, our cooking details were up to snuff for everyone.
I should be thanking you.
Uh, yeah. Uh, this Friday, uh, the Noctivs are performing on stage here. Uh, eight o'clock, they're doing a friends and family show, they introduce themselves, their parts to the show. It's, uh, their first public run-through, uh, before they have their ICHAs as a. Quarterfinal competition on Sunday, so anyone's welcome to come out and see them, what they're working on. Uh, our Winter Guard Group has their first competition on Saturday at West Orange High School. And as the student representatives reported, Beauty and the Beast auditions are complete. The cast is, uh, hard at work already, and we do a lot of. Lunch sales at the high school for shows we hold here, we also do. Online sales through our website. Now, Beauty and the Beast is expected to have a big draw at the younger kid age group. And I was wondering if there was a way or some thoughts on how we could have. Some kind of substitute for our lunch sales at that level, like maybe a parent pickup. At each school certain days, or if there's other events that principals may have, parents. Where they can kind of pre-buy their tickets, something of that nature, just to, just to get that exposure out. Uh, at, to those groups, uh, and then we'll, they'll have a better feel of what our attendance is going to be. Uh, for those shows, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Janell McGowan again, real quick, um, something that I was just thinking, um, about homework-free weekends. Maybe we were talking about mental health, um. Another district that I know of extremely well implemented it this year, once a month, homework-free weekends. Something to think about, I'd like to talk to you more about it, Dr. Portis, um, but I, I. Have heard that it's going very well in its district-wide, so it's K through twelfth grade, homework-free weekend once a month. For stigma-free.
Thank you.
So, a couple of quick things, uh, appreciate the updates as always about the incredible work that's going on with our music programs. Um, definitely with the Beauty and the Beast ticket sales too, um, send me whatever information you have on it, because what I'll do is I'll put it in my. Uh, weekly updates, but I can also make sure I fan it out to the elementary schools. And I'm not saying that Mr. Hazler's updates don't get read very closely by the constituents, but they. I think they get a little more attention at the elementary school level, and then if we do have something where there's a natural ability to have. Um, representatives from the Beauty and the Beast's production team or whatever there to present to parents. I'd, I'd love to be able to tie that together, that might be tougher to do, definitely the newsletters, I think you'll get a lot of traction there. Um, and then as, as far as the homework-free weekends, um, I trust that that would also extend to administrators. That would have an email-free weekend, and I, I'm not sure, I mean, quick vote of the two I have here. Getting nods, so I, I think it's a great idea, um, it's something that. You know, we, we hear a lot of talk about, about student mental health, and, um, a, a lot of it is, is about awareness, but then what are, what are the solutions? So if there are things that we can do and potentially do easily, I, I, I like it. And I think during, um, during the COVID time, when our physical plant was closed down. We actually were telling teachers they weren't allowed to check their emails on Saturdays, and I think a lot of them actually quite enjoyed that. Um, I, I brought it up that my Volkswagen shuts down company email from seven PM on Friday till seven AM on Monday. Now, I think most of my staff members would probably lose their minds if they didn't have access to email on Sunday night, but. Um, the, the, but these are the things worth considering, not just for our kids, but also for our staff members, so I appreciate it. I'll take credit for it, of course, um, so the seven people who are in the audience right now will know that's not mine, I'll take credit.
Maybe, uh, your next snow day could be sponsored by the Beauty and the Beast or something to that effect.
Yeah, I didn't do so great with my call on Friday, so I don't know if you necessarily want to hitch your wagon to this star at this point. Yeah. I've, I've been asked if I, if I have ever thought of doing any, any silly snow day call messages or songs. Um, I, I don't think any are forthcoming. From me, maybe from some of my friends.
All right, thank you, uh, next on the agenda is unfinished business, I have one item, and, uh, Dr. Portis kind of mentioned it already. Well, not kind, if he did mention it already, on one eleven, I attended a meeting with other members of our community to discuss the Veterans Wall Project. So we had spoken about that at previous meetings, that is getting off the ground again. Um, the first meeting focused on organizing the effort to complete the project by trying to understand what the current status was, and then talking about next steps. And, uh, as Dr. Portis had said, we were joined by, uh, Solutions Architect, who's providing design assistance, and we're planning to meet again in February. Any other unfinished business from any board members?
Yeah, I just have one item, so, um, we have a policy that will be up for discussion at the next workshop meeting. Um, the Board Superintendent Communication Policy, so it is in backup from previous meetings. If you don't, if you can't find it or you don't have a copy of the draft that was provided, uh, please let me know so we can make sure that you got that. And, uh, take a look at the sentence, I think it's one or two sentences that were added. Um, if you want to contact me individually over email to discuss anything first, please feel free. Um, otherwise come to the meeting prepared to discuss, thank you.
I have a quick one, uh, we are definitely past due on our board facilities tour. Uh, we didn't get to get, I know we briefly spoke about that, um, probably the end of. Last year, I think, but, uh, we definitely need to try to schedule something, just to look at the ESIP project, um. All the, everything, actually everything that's been done, so just, uh, if we could work with Dwight and. I know it might need two dates, I know it's going to be hard to get the whole board, um, originally I was, you know, making sure, wanted to make sure that. Mr. Pompeo was there since he has never done it, and, and Mr. Gitten, but, um, we're just going to have to get, throw something on the calendar and. Make people gum.
Okay, uh, new business, I, I have one item for new business. Um, being that our, uh, contract with the post office, which is below our board office, is going to expire. Uh, in the future, I would like to put a ad hoc committee together of board members just to work with Dr. Portis. Um, to just kind of steer that in the right direction. Um, so what I would suggest is if anyone's interested to be on that committee, just send me an email, and then I'll put the committee together, and then. We could start working towards that goal of, uh, making sure that we, um, we know where that path is going to lead and, uh, get the full. Uh, opportunity out of wherever it does lead, all right?
But wouldn't that, that wouldn't fall under FFA?
Well, it would fall under FFA, but it's kind of like such a niche thing, but I think it'd be good to have just like a, a dedicated committee to it and not put it under something else.
I'll tell you one thing, nobody there knows what's going on, so that's for sure. That's what my intel has gotten.
Your intel is usually pretty right, huh? Oh yeah, about the post office?
Well, I mean, where are they going to go?
All right.
The others, no, the Plonic Post Office says there's no way in the world it will happen.
Anybody else have any new business?
Two zones and that's it.
Anybody else have any new business? Board member announcements?
Yeah, I have one, uh, so I got to attend, um, the sixth grade concert at PV, which was Mr. Foth's final. Um, concert, and, uh, it was, uh, it was great because, um, Ms. Gareth, uh, who is the choir teacher. That came in, uh, end of last year, made sure that the entire audience and former students in all grades. Knew that this was Mr. Foth's final performance and, uh, had a surprise song for him at the end, and everybody stood up. And everybody was singing, and he was, uh, I truly believe he was shocked and, and did not realize that was going to happen, so. It was, uh, a really special moment, um, I know Mr. Foth is a absolute fan favorite in that school. Um, and the amount of selfies that I've saw taken after the concert shows, that was a true statement, uh, and it was really, it was a fun time.
Just added, according to my intel, he really was surprised and, uh, and, and really moved.
I got a chance to, uh, attend Coach Craig Spencer's, uh, in- induction to the Wrestling Hall of Fame. I didn't get to go to the dinner, uh, but I came for the match that night, got to hang out with him for a little while, and, um. It, it truly was an amazing night to see how many people came back. Uh, for this, for this guy, I mean, it was, it was crazy, right? And they, they raised money, uh, he has, he's been, uh, they raised money for him, I think they raised about eight thousand dollars. And, uh, he was my, he was my wrestling coach, he was phys ed teacher, and, um. Honestly, I was shocked, I walked up to him and he said, hey, Sam, what's going on, I was like, wow, I mean, just. It wa- he was just, it was amazing how many people came out to that thing, um. You know, the one, it was just great, and I do. Good night, it was a good night.
Anybody else?
Yep, I have one, um, I went to the Unified Basketball Game today here at the high school, which was a great time, as it has been in the past as well. It was so much fun to watch, um, just pure joy for the game, um, and I just wanted to, oh, I lost my, I just wanted to give a. Uh, acknowledgement to the athletes, um, who participated, Thomas, Ahmed, Katie, Zach, and Blake, they, uh. It was a really tough match, and they didn't have a good amount of subs to keep them going through the whole game, and they put their all in for the entire time. Um, and congratulations to Coach Justin LaFever for doing a great job leading them as well. Uh, and I'm just really glad that we have this program, uh, and look forward to seeing it continue to grow over the years.
Okay, uh, we do have a reason to go into executive session tonight, where we will discuss student matters. No action will be taken, and we will adjourn from there, our next meeting is February fifth here at the high school, and is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? All right, good night, everyone.